All right, can everybody hear me? All right, good evening, everybody. This is Yancey County Board of Commissioners and Regent. This is Speedy. I'm here with the 10th, 2025. Um, and I'm calling this meeting to order. And I appreciate everybody coming out, too. The first snow of the year, nasty day outside. Uh, but that's the snow led for the people who are going to come in. Um, pleasant weather, it's an open weather, it's an empty protection. So, let's go. And the Father, we thank you and praise you for the day. Thank you for your goodness and your mercy, your time, and so just asking, pray God that you just give us understanding, wisdom, the sermon about what we need to do for the business of Yancey County. That's every single person here, their lives and all of them. And we ask you, pray God, if we would just do everything according to your will and to give you honor, praise and glory. Thank you for the freedom and the liberty that we have to conduct the business as we did in Jesus' name. All saying please. Thanks so much. Looks like we've got a very short agenda tonight, not a whole lot going on. Uh, this time of year is kind of slow anyway. Uh, but I hope everybody's had enough time to look over the agenda and get stuff on approval. We've got a motion, I'll give a second. All fivers say aye? None of those motions here, thank you for that. Um, the same agenda. Two items on there, the approval of the tax delays adjustments for 2025. The October 2025 tax collection report, as we have every month for informational purposes. Any discussion or anything about these two items? For one motion, they are second. Two seconds, none of third. All fivers say aye? Here, none of both, this is fair. Department updates, uh, this month, we only have one, and Mr. Brandon Pross, our emergency management director, he's going to come. I've got the ordinance for us and some stuff for us. Thanks for coming, Brandon.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Um, before again, I'm just going to be a quick little review, but we have one more line of appointment. So, with my own growing, doing new work. We had kind of, had been just emergency manager, we created Yancey County Emergency Services. Um, what I did was, uh, that umbrella, one umbrella, France and stuff like that. EMS is still there, only see however their special teams are under me. Um, but Chris, she'll run that, and she's over at the sheriff's run team, she's under that. It's a, so, uh, we could come together as a, um, emergency services group. Um, so maybe my department is the emergency management agency, the government's office, and the special operations enhancement. Um, so that's up and running. Going to their, we take the grant for a season, uh, which we got in, uh, that's going to be assisting the park guards with wildfire mitigation during the season. I thought that it would be assisting the, uh, wellness rescue team, getting access to people. But, for my department, taken, we're staying busy, busy, busy. So that's my program. So what I got for you tonight is a Yancey County Fire Protection Prevention Ordinance. But since me becoming the fire marshal, there was really nothing on paper, what the fire marshal does, uh, what he does with the county, you see, or, uh, or for the government. So, uh, when, um, we talked with the state of the county, so we came to example, send, same size of this county population, money, so that go kind of under it together. And I came with some, some large reverse general statutes. Uh, I don't know how we did this, um, people will be here online, I'm not a great reader. Uh, so basically just want to outline, um, for the county and citizens, what the duties of fire marshal is. Uh, clearly, uh, the fire marshal's in charge of fire protection, prevention of the county. Uh, it is, uh, inspections of its public schools, also assisting with, uh, mitigation, investigation fires. Uh, so we created a mission statement, fire priority. Uh, mission statement, the Yancey County Emergency Services Stormwater Division is to minimize the risk of fire, the act of stealing property of the Yancey County accomplices. The fire marshal's vision to provide effective fire prevention, fire investigation, fire mitigation, and assist the fire departments and rescue squads from the county. And I certainly write it, um, between me and the county manager, one of the most responsible for the volunteer partner. So someone's going to be going to be first, um, and then so on and so on, when it's the fire chief. So, we've kept a very good working relationship with the fire chiefs and new municipal units. Uh, I met with some of the fire chiefs and got their table on what they would like to see with the county, and that's what we come up with. Um, so further, the organization outlined inspection of buildings and premises, you know, all commercial property within this county. And inspection of the building, one year, two year, three year, or whatever, depending on their occupancy class, whether it's industrial, public school, whatever. Um, so I've been outlining here, uh, I've also outlined in record keeping, uh, prevention programs. Uh, I'll talk with our chief, said, let me help out, we're doing the fire prevention programs in all the schools. Um, and also to the public, uh, you might think fire dues are done, that's what we're here for. Um, also, with the big part of this is doing permits, uh, with commercial businesses, um, I'm responsible for doing permits, fire inspection permits, so they can get their C F and they go to the fair. Um, that's the big part of this. With the, we have been such a thing with, and this is not about generating revenue, it's not about making, it's about breaking even. You know, uh, with that, I can take money, slide and add and give it to park permission, turn it back back in community. Um, that's also with this, that I'll be, in just a minute, uh, there's two orders in effect that we like to go in effect, uh, the fire marshal, the fire marshal's fire chief for backing. And, and they use it, they do go in effect, will assist the fire from the county. Um, so sort of, it, it, it's, um, our base outlines, um, what general statute is a fire marshal, the right to enter a criminal, you know, building. Um, I talked about the party lanes, the roof, water, structures, or illegal vehicles, and enforcement privileges that the fire marshal can have for general statute. Like I said, it has also, um, a inspection, uh, frequency list in there for the building that you can look at, um, plans. I mean, we're the fire chiefs, and you got a commercial business coming in, uh, we'd like to establish a plan of view, any, the business comes in, they'll submit the plans to the fire marshal's office. And me and whatever fire chief, district that business is going to lie in, we will review the plans. Number one, make sure to have the fire inspection, the fire safety mechanisms, they have to have run business. Uh, number two, make sure that half the water supply is there for the fire performance, it's a process to break out. Um, that, um, so we're looking at adding that, um, if this one is approved about, uh, measures. Um, this was unsafe buildings and systems, um, I could print just a brief table there to, and that's more of a building inspection part of it, also with the fire marshal, uh, with safety to assistance. Um, with demons, something, um, um, not safe to the public, and not safe to those. Still can be some subventions. So, the state fire marshal can write a civil penalty, penalty or flag fines under general statute. Um, I'm not a law enforcement officer, um, so I cannot, um, charge anybody with a misdemeanor that long to do that. But I can give them a civil penalty, um, and violation, um, and that's what just outlines this, who can do that. Which is a no fire, fire commission code, building, so this will get, we already have that, along with some general statutes, 153A, 160A. Um, so just outlines as penalties, what you do, how to collect them, where the, if a penalty is issued to a citizen, how do they pay it, where do they pay it? Um, and some of the cases, if they don't pay. Um, another important thing they have here is a forty and a half violation. So I listen to this in here, so if the community comes up and they find a fire hazard somewhere, or they're going to build, if they find a hazard somewhere in the county, I don't report this, they tell me, oh, one, who do they call? So I've got to listen there, the state looks how they do it, um, doomsday, and I remember, get them out, oh, I want one. So that I want people can be, uh, more concentrated on the emergency point on. Um, so I've got to listen there and to information they got to give those complaints and how we handle. So, I'll get down to the, um, over the, the most important thing about this ordinance, so my job is to keep, um, citizens and citizens of this county people safe. Um, by doing that, I have to look at all, I've read false alarms, fire alarms is a big one in the county, that, uh, we rule that any structure, fire alarm, and then we dispatch and to read and report fire. So I guess a lot of people on the road, red lights and sirens, there's a lot of people reds. Um, so with the fire chiefs, they seem to go to places over and over, over and over, false alarms, with no remedy, uh, happen I correct? So, we kind of, kind of put a false alarm, um, policy in there. So, a one, two, three, at the same residence, is going to get a written warning, um, from the fourth, the false alarm in the same year. Um, they were supposed to double penalty, um, and then moves on to there. Um, from the very first false alarm, I'll be contacted, give them the written warning, and I'll give them the steps to mitigate that, and then from going to number four. Um, it also says, sorry, fire marshal's standing on a hundred percent volunteer, um, keeping them in service with true mercy out here, and not let, keep on, keep on.
Yes, sir. This is with regards to ordering the turnout.
Yeah.
I said, I said, there's now, I asked, there's an incident that left, that you now have, the county's, I said, I said, not.
Yes. So, uh, we need to do that. What I'm doing is I've been instructed to bring this from the county commissioner first, after the county, then I'm going to get to the, uh, city council meeting. Present it to Heather and the, and the city council, everybody's on the same page. Um, exiles will be part of this, with, uh, he proved everything, and had his approval, and he felt that heaven, and looked to this. But I was instructed, let's go to the county first, and let's get it done, county level, and then we'll, I'm playing with it.
And then I have a question as well, so what I'm hearing you say, you got to the peaks, after the first, well, I mean, there has to be a initial alarm, that, that was, that was a false alarm. And then they, another one, so do they, do they, then they have the first one, or as soon as they have a false alarm, they obviously.
They can, I mean, I would give them a written warning, make contact. Yes, okay, yeah.
So, are, are you, or try this in a way, is that, is that three alarms a year, or is it three alarms ever?
Three alarms in one year, one, one year. Um, we, we figured, we figured three alarms every one. It wouldn't be, we, we go up and forth, make false problems, so we're going through it once in one year. Um, with that, if, if, if there's a civil penalty issued, so that the, um, act of will go back to Yancey County Fire Management. Um, that way, the other half will come to the fire marshal's office, which will return, return back to the county, um, in the means of, uh, prevention and education. Um, any more questions?
This is not all day, and it's not no way that they can burn over here.
With the news.
So here with me.
No.
We're getting them to start coming out, huh? Instead of locking doors, inside the building, something I worry, somebody's saying something will happen.
Well, and, 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 I think, uh, it's just a good thing you brought that up, you know, with that one particular property, that's not a monitored alarm system. So when that one goes off, each end goes off, and it's got to come out in one. It does not trigger automatically. So, that's something else I'm working on. Um, that should be a monitoring system. So, the fire chief of the district, right, I said, the fire chief is all clean control, so if the fire chief's okay, because we're born, the penalty, then we'll go to the fire chief's recognition. He's starting to have a shirt that, that it is his district, his citizens, um, so I'm going to, what I'm looking forward is a way for we can help enforce the fact of the ones that's constant, that's not getting, the prioritize and get through to, that they're born accepted. Then what would sometimes be, that takes people to fight. Uh, we never get to that, and if I can correct the form, for, yes, it are worth my total attention. Um, the other big topic I am stressed that's on here is open burning. So, there's open burning laws, it's going to all come on, um, and being a North Carolina citizen, it is your right to burn. Okay, as long as it's a city, town, or rest where it's named, or a city or town, uh, you're the county, that is your right, as a civil citizen, the bill firm. As long as you have a permit, but by court service, and you're burning that correct visiting materials. Uh, so with the increase probably we have around, we've been several fires last year, such legal materials, um, with no permit. They're not paying any divorce, there's a firm ban. So with this, according to this, we go there, we're mainly going to burn, the burning trash, and then, the policy, you should not burn. Then I have to build, it's building site, uh, it need to be, you know, if there's someone in chief burning yard debris, either chief burning yard debris, they got water out, and everything's fine, but she forgot to get a burn, so that's education for, you know, and educate animal with the government. This is the more, um, I won't say, I don't know, people who are burning more hazardous. At, at burning, uh, need more hazardous materials that's hazardous people, uh, since they're air, air blocking. So, you know, with, with air blocking, they have investigators right around them, or they're trying to read smoke. And what they look for is black smoke, and they'll ride by, and when air blocking rolls up, that's twenty-five thousand dollar fine. If you're not, if it's safe material, it's not from, no question of that. So I won't be able to get twenty-five thousand dollar fine, as long as I can afford it, and what's your risk? But my, my, uh, uh, was it, I, I look for that, I need to cite somebody much less, I will cite one much less, that turns out H K M, bringing away from burning illegal materials. So, once again, um, since our hard performance, if I wasn't to cite somebody, pay the penalty of that, actually, we could, we'll get it to the primary fire district, but that incident occurred, and doesn't happen on the back of the fire marshal's office. Um, all of our chiefs were in breach of that, hopefully. Um, I also spoke with, uh, Dylan, who is the L E O, who the North Carolina Horse Service, uh, and he is a big proponent in me doing this, several other counties around this, all county, here's county, all small counties, all, all businesses, we're here. And they've got ready to be somewhere, and they've got legal burning. Um, so, my jurisdiction, only legal burn is anything from the house, at the hundred feet away. Anything outside of, is long, or, or L E O, the border service. Um, and that, that if the burn house have a hundred feet, that's illegal, they're getting a class three misdemeanor, four hundred. So, like I said, I'm all, I, I don't write, uh, misdemeanors, I think he might jail, I'm not a civil company, um, and he's all there. Our share of police and let them handle that's long, uh, jurisdictions, and where that incident may occur. Um, any questions on that, open burning? Um, and open burn, I've got a guy out there who can burn, I'll look at, listen to, um, what you can burn, what you cannot burn, how to pay the way, much sure. Next, with, uh, fireworks, uh, the county already does this, we need fireworks permit, everybody's top top of the fee. Uh, so the fire technicians permit, that's the someone to hire, make management, so there will be a fee associated, that doesn't let them back the fees. That, I mean, you want to get your building, uh, building permit fee, or is not that? So just kind of get that list out to general staff, once you give, um, offer this, pretty easy. And if I want those two, issue a fire technicians permit. Next is hazardous hazmat. Um, what a hazmat is, how we handle it, um, what's with hazmat? Um, it usually requires a R T P, which is a state level team, for some that have. If I happen to dispatch that, there's a big issue with that. Um, say, can I return, can I turn, uh, bill of county for fee? So what is, that's the basic of the county, uh, who's the financial liability for that, that's going to be, I mean, it's a little hazmat. Um, and have that listed, you know, and how they, um, pay for those, the fees associated with hazmat, those are. Um, and then the last one is going to be my fee schedule, um, which is proposed for thirty-five thousand dollars this year. But that is all, uh, routine inspections, uh, inspections, business inspections, uh, and a lot of those give by square footage. Um, but to be, that's it, that often, uh, investigations and inspection violations, and what they, the, the. The fire extinguisher is missing, um, well, need to be buried, how much that fine? Any questions? I mean, it was reviewed with a lot of material, um, I will write, write some action, if I have any further, any questions?
Any more questions for Brandon? I know that we have, this is an ordinance, I propose to us, uh, kind of standard operating, because our local council has to look at that before we can prove anything, so. Who will have that ordinance to be with, uh, this town, and we'll, we will, that.
Well, I will, and then, uh. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
So, I just put it on, that we present. Uh, we're going to get a file. Stone Dad and Mom and John Perks. All right, next, uh, we have, for six, is our tax refund, late applications, and I'm assuming it's going to be Jessica. All right, good to see you, ma'am, thanks for coming tonight. I'm sitting at that, that's a life.
So, uh, there's one refund in your pocket that needs action, um, hopefully you've had a chance to look it over. If you've got any questions, just let me know.
Any questions on this, uh, this, you've done a quarter application?
So, it's a refund that, uh, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents, um, for probably not pretty much, so, uh, but a lot from twenty-one, uh, from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, two and thirty-one.
And your recommendation is to, is to refund?
Yeah, sure.
All right, any questions? All right, good. So we got a motion, I'll give a second. Second, I'll say aye?
Thanks.
Next, out of number seven, this is Stephen, the, um, the new man today, with Rocky, just prepared and ready to go. Thanks for coming, we appreciate you being here, Stephen.
So, I'm with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and we are a new division that was created in January by Governor Sun, and our job is to administer the one point four billion dollars of state has been allotted in, um, C D B G T R funds, which are newly development block grant, there we go. And you can see how we have proposed to use this money with the vast majority of it going to repair and rebuild single family housing, that was destroyed by the storm. That, and that's all, spend much of our time talking about, but that's for low income, that is the funding of less of the work. So, people apply for it, they choose to accept it or not, but usually, we usually come in after, but nonprofits and others have come in. Um, we have just estimated seventy-three thousand homes that need to be restored as a result of, like, North Carolina. And, um, we anticipate being able to fix about three thousand with this money. So, as you can imagine, it takes everything, it takes insurance, it takes folks in themselves, it takes the nonprofits, I know y'all seen quite a few in Yancey County. Um, we are anticipating another hundred ninety-one million in multifamily housing, so those are rental housing, non-owner occupied, and then fifty-three million where we try to rebuild and restore some of the housing for owner occupied, again, for lower income folks, which is a requirement from the U S Department of Health and Urban Development, that is who gives us this money. Uh, a hundred ninety-four million in community infrastructure, this money is really meant to come in, those FEMA and public assistance, and, um, to restore, uh, beyond what FEMA will, will build back to, and also there's some mitigation as well. Lastly, a hundred and eleven million for economic rebuy. And then five percent, uh, set aside for administration.
No question.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Economic revaluation, what, what might something like, could apply to that, when you do?
We're looking at downtown, um, restoration, we have a lot of downtown flood, or commercial district, but we'll get to that. And, but I'll be happy to answer any questions, look like. So HUD, um, identifies for us the most impacted districts, counties are the mid, that's called for green fees, and requires that at least eighty percent of the C D B G T R funds are spent in this area, so you can see Yancey is in there, along with fifteen other counties. There's also a zip code in yellow at McElburn County, that's the zip code that is just south of Lake Norman, they had some pretty significant flooding. Uh, and then out of western North Carolina, and I'm ahead, so I understand the people, and what people think, we're going to spend a ton in Charlotte, that's not intended to be the case, and I've been, when I've talked to the fire chief in that, in that area, we have a, it's a small community, most of that zip code is water. And, um, we don't anticipate candidly, a lot of folks being able to come in. So, then HUD's focus, in addition to the mid, is that we spend about seventy percent of our money to home load of moderate income households and communities. Typically defined as a hundred and twenty percent of less than the area we, show them a place, and so I think Yancey is somewhere around, you know, sixty percent of the area median income is somewhere around twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars from jobs here. So, we had submitted an action plan that was approved by HUD, and that's outlines how we plan to use the fund, and then lastly, and this is probably the most cumbersome part of the slide, even though it looks so innocuous in that last bullet, is that we have to comply with all the federal, the procurement requirement, so, so y'all and others who've gone C D B G, great, we can, you know, but it's quite ancient, so I don't want to sit over looking, like I, I buy another town in western North Carolina, if we could just pick and choose, but twenty-one to follow, and I would like to have one. We cannot. So, I want to talk to you more about single family housing, um, and this is really to help us get the word out as well. We are, um, putting eight hundred and seven million in single family housing, that's really focused on housing, and so do housing and local home rehabilitation, reconstruction. That is really focused on housing, and so do housing and local home rehabilitation, reconstruction, replacement. Right now, we've gotten about fifty four hundred applications for the program across the full twenty eight counties. So the HUD identifies one area and then the state date, um, where it can spend up to twenty percent. And the counties also have. Or is it eligibility? And, uh, that is where we are so far. We're going to close our application window. We opened it in mid-June, we're going to close it. So I think, well, we'll get to how many y'all have when we get further. So the program, right now we're around about seventy five percent, we think are going to need full reconstruction and about twenty five percent, um, in the repair of housing. But it's really focused on those fixing those homes for those folks. And we start with sixty percent or less of area median income. Or less area median income. We also, and then a hundred and twenty percent or less, we also prioritize those families that have. A senior child or someone with a disability. And we have laid out plans and contracted with builders separately. And so we have just a set of three different types of plans for two bedroom, two bath house, three bedroom. Four bedroom, two bath house. And then with contract renovations, so we, we make it pretty secure, we don't. So the applicant, in order to be eligible, must have owned the damaged property at the time of filling and was still on the property. They have occupied the home as a primary residence. So I know we have a lot of the western North Carolina may have a secondary home. We will repair those in this program. The property must have been damaged as a result of filling. We can go in and fix things that have been damaged before filling, so HUD requires us to build back certain standards. So we have to go back and fix it up, even if it wasn't, you know. And it has to be an eligible structure type, and you must be current on your property taxes or in a payment plan or good standard. Same with your mortgage, and then there are all sorts of things around your low to moderate income. It can't be more than twenty percent. So we have contracted with a vendor, the name of that company is Horn. And their job is to go out and help us implement it, so like all the, all the applications, help people get through the applications. Because it's not easy, you can see here all the things that we need people to provide to us, which some of, most of which is required by federal law. And, um, then we work through that and help them through that. Horn had hired a lot of people west of North Carolina, we have three centers, so that's, I think, is the next one. We go through those first. So the applicant will gather their documentation needed to apply. They submit their application, we do intake and eligibility review, and then one biggest challenge is duplication of benefits. So under federal law, we're not allowed to give somebody more of the same money twice or federal money twice. So if you've got FEMA, which is able to repair your home, put that money into your home. We can look at that and move forward, if you didn't, then you still have that money, you need to write us. A deal amount of that. Which, as you can imagine, it's really hard for a lot of us, believe that's a lot of what we're talking about. So we frequently work through duplication benefits issues with people that are unable or they have open minded. Um, we sometimes refer them to the long-term recovery group to see if a nonprofit can help them. Or if there's a way for us to change the house they would have gotten if it's a smaller amount. Say, we have one person right now in, uh, southern county that has his door come, and so he can't pay sixteen hundred dollars. So we're trying to see if there's sixteen hundred dollars that we can carve off what we would give them back preparing the home. He doesn't have to write that check. So that's, that's how we kind of work through that budget. It's pretty, it's pretty cumbersome, and we have to duplicate FEMA, home business administration. If you got insurance, if you got help from a nonprofit, they can lend directly to your home. Um, so we have to also do site-specific environmental reviews, so that's to make sure we comply with the National Environmental Policy Act. Some sort of preservation. We also have to work with the four tribes that historically been part of western North Carolina and trouble lands here. So it's the Cherokee, the Eastern Band, the Muscovi, and the Catawba. And that can take a little bit of time, they have thirty days to review the files, and we're working on. Um, you, once your award determination is made, or a hundred percent to the applicant, the case manager meets with them. We try to give them the case manager, same case manager throughout the process, so they can. Person always thoughtful, we have term of end, so what we do are best on that. And then they meet with the case manager and the general contractor, they do pre-construction, um, start construction, um, they move out and then construction and move in. It's the, it's, the general contractor can work around the family, they'll do it, but if not, we, um, we work with them. During the construction.
You do, uh, mobile homes?
We, we do, and we bet, we do full replacement. The biggest thing around mobile homes is whether or not they own the land, and if you have any issues around that, they can. But we've actually already done, I think, two or three mobile home replacements, those are the first ones to do that. Yep, so I would, that's where I would encourage you to apply. So as, or personally, my, so as of November seventh, we have, um, almost three hundred applications through the county. We have this on our website, so you can go in and see by county and how many people have applied. Um, so we're still working through eligibility, it's around sixty days from the time we get all of the paperwork. So forty seven of the people is eligible, and we've been done about almost forty damage to that like business. Um, I will say that we found, um. That a lot of the traditional methods you would think to get people to know about the program worked. So newspaper, billboards, TV, radio, we've done all sorts of things, and we've really. Um, love with knocking on doors and calling people. So I think your security has been a fault, and I'm making sure that there's no trespassing signs, we're making sure it's all. And we appreciate it. Um. All right, so we'll be, there we go. So our intake centers are in Marion, Asheville, and. Boone, and then we also have a regular, uh, Monday through Monday and Wednesday, nine to five. At TRG in Burnsville. And then you can see Bakersville has another resource center. You can also, uh, people can call, go to the online portal, like use the mobile app. I think when you start to get into the paperwork and stuff, sometimes it's easier to have to make it downwind, so we have this. And so two question about the other program. So this is what we're anticipating on multifamily. We're going to have small projects, which are those that are four units or less. We're going to use the existing builders that we have, and we'll be working with, um, small landlords if they want to add any. Like a garage, I mean, a garage apartment or a separate unit, they have a separate lot, things like that, where they would, um. Provide the thing at affordable rates for a period of years and, uh, do things like that. So that's, a small program will probably roll out, it'll be an application basis, Horn is going to be the vendor. And that'll probably be rolled out in December, mid-December, early January. Then we are, on the larger projects, going to work with the agency. Providing gap funding for the nine percent, the four percent low income housing tax credit home projects. And then we recognize that y'all may not have low income housing tax credit projects, as some of the county's. It may not even, so we are working on developing a program for that middle group where you have. And, um, typically the fewer units you have, the more money you have to put into it, so we would fund those more. And usually for HUD, you have to have a period of affordable rental for up to twenty years. So it makes the financing issues manage difficult. Um, but workforce housing for ownership, we plan to launch that next year sometime. We're still living at models in other states and how they've done it. I think Florida, who's a couple of counties in Florida have been, you know, and comes by the way that. Is they built the home and say it's a four hundred thousand dollar home. State will pay for it, the county will pay for three hundred thousand with C D B G T R, and then they'll fail it to a low income. Using some numbers as an example, but it's trying to get people, um. Who are in the workforce and maybe not in, in the lower inquiry, but they don't make the sense of funding it. So they can afford to purchase the one in the community network. Economic revitalization visits grant funding, and you can see in that, um, fourth column, the applicants. So if local governments are eligible applicants for any of these programs, and then the last two, it's only local governments and/or like downtown nonprofit organizations. So for economic revitalization, it's rehabbing commercial structures, small businesses in impacted commercial areas. So there does have to be a tieback to the storm. Um. And we put a hundred and eleven million in there. And then lastly, community infrastructure. I do think economic revitalization, community infrastructure, all these impacted by FEMA public assistance, and we're spending a lot of time right now in FEMA. Trying to understand like when we can expect the public assistance, especially for FEMA category C or G faster. Um, FEMA will build back to what you have, and so C D B G T R can be used, be used to build back to what you need. So if you, like, I'm going to use math, because it was in the floodplain, they want to move it out of the floodplain, they want to expand the size of it when they move out of the floodplain. We can help them, FEMA might pay for what they have, but we can help them with mitigation to move it out and then to, to expand. Not helping with the very, it's a project, it's only worth fifty million dollars, but that would be. And I'm happy to, um, to answer any questions.
Would you like? So we have to understand that specific reason, asking a question about taking another revitalization. That'll be a grant funding through local government to business owners?
It, it could be, we're, we're, yeah, it could be. We're going to have either local governments or nonprofits apply. So the local government could decide if they want to help repair the commercial district. They'd have to have an IND use, like, we're not going to do business grants, uh, grants of business. But it'd have to be an IND use to rehab, uh, commercial structure, basically to put your business district or your. And we're defining business district very closely, because we know some, some places like Asheville, it's the River Arts District. But in some places like Winkle, it's a couple of buildings along problem. We, we're trying to define them all with them multiple different types.
And, and the recent question, I've had several folks that, that have. Three months business. And then other. We're going to ask, is there any problem that, anything for us? At this point, I said, no, it's just something.
If they had damage to the, physical damage to their business, then yes. If it was, uh. Like what you would anticipate, we did during the pandemic, because I mean, it's a pandemic, I'm supposed to say, where we get business grants, just because you got a loss. It's not the same. We, so far the legislature has not decided to fund business grants.
So it's local governments and nonprofits.
Yeah. And you would, they would work through the nonprofits or the local governments, and the reason for that is because, you can imagine. There are a lot of federal requirements, including environmental regulations. So that is very, very difficult for some nonprofits and debtless businesses that are not used to. In the federal government, say you want this money, this money fine, you got to follow our procurement laws, you got to follow the state's thinking, you got to follow N F A. It gets really tough, really quickly. We are happy to answer questions anytime. Lynn and I have already appeared before the lunch slips together, so she can find me whenever. All right, thank you.
Good, good. Good information. What I had done is I had directed, uh, I had directed several people down to the long-term recovery group office and let them. Get their explanation, maybe from the one I decent witnesses. And just we have, hanging out pretty good. I think one of them is part of that forty eight that is already in. Check out, so that's a good, and, and we appreciate that little gap, so we're coming to tell a bit. All right, next on our agenda is our county manager, Portis Long.
My voice is loud, I'll take that. All right, so I've got a couple of things for you. First off, we have a, in your packet, a board of health. I read, read that, she's one of the men. Uh, and so. Um, they were asked to reappoint her. Um, she's dead free side now, they moved to Virginia County, she doesn't have. In here, but. In there, he's been gay, the reason. Why she can't still fight it, since she is a feminist here, it's her. She's got a public health. So. We would just ask that you would. She is.
Yeah, yeah.
She's back to the fair person on the floor. She does.
All right, so we have a note, have a motion to do it, so. So here's six. I was supposed to say, ah.
And she put in there that there's no other practice in Venus that we're. Just the part of that. The right thing to do. Um, couple of things, and I'll let Morgan, I'll take you on the, on Bailey Markoff, Markery, and then the update is, is, um. We're going to be catering to landfill, obviously, that'll go out for via. Here. Um, and. That's, we have that out in the mail, probably just ran it two weeks, big day, whatever, it went on there. Involved on that. Another little update is the Chief Cares Group. Just to be recorded for the four acres up there at, uh, that. So, uh, they will be setting down forty three homes up there, as you know, so that's, that's in the way, uh, in the books there, and all underway. So they've been in contact, that happened, uh, in the last week. So they had filled all their due diligence that they wanted to do up there, and were ready to move. But it is. Yep, so, uh, we look forward to the, speaking of homes, we look forward to the homes one. Um, another little update is, uh, some of our veterans. Ask from, it's a marine group, going to put a beach on the square, be on the ground, and on that side, looking. This way, uh, they would like to place a, um, veterans beach there in memory of the marines and veteran spirit. Uh, it's on that end, I didn't think there'd be any problem, but I wanted to run it by you guys, they have not done it yet. And that would like to. Appreciate and thank you, Heather, so if you guys give a back and move forward there, uh, at no cost again. Um, got a resolution, they're in your packet for Pine Storm, we've been trying to get up in conference then. Uh, Arca Project, Star River Road, and the, well, everything's pretty much under contract except for each agency. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, you know, we have to back off that in terms of FEMA project. So that'll be, uh, in the process of getting that back. Or there, so, but it's not on Arca anymore. So, uh, Pine Storm, that you've got in your packet here is a resolution, a tentative award. Um, the numbers changed a little bit, the witness. Went round and round and down some. Told the members, and they got their numbers wrong when they submitted it into the queue, so we're happy to do another one. They had a, both went round and round with them, because you know, this is a family object. Uh, behalf of the town. Um. So they said they were about a hundred and ninety nine, right at two hundred thousand short. And so what they said, you remember, the bottom number is still the same, as we've figured back and forth with them. So they had picked that off of their engineering fee, I don't know, that's, that's what they, they've done to make it right. So, um, the bottom number is still the same, the project's going to move forward, but the numbers changed a little bit as far as the structure. The FEMA for the engineering. The sales is the same. Um, so I would just ask that you read, redo that, we just have to have that in the minute to be able to send the queue. Those numbers have changed, even though the bottom number has not. I just ask that you approve, approve that resolution.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. The, the.
The, the bottom number has not changed, the numbers from inside, the bid, the project bid there is, uh, changed a little bit because, uh, they just picked their two hundred thousand.
What, nothing?
No, no, it's just, uh.
And I'll be honest with you, they're done with that. If they can say it's time to reverse time.
Maybe it was the best thing they could do, they changed the, you know, the numbers in the budget, so, for the project, project budget. Um, just. Um, just doing, same, same money, we, you know, we, we, you know, we had to go back to the well, we got money once, and then went back to the well, we did. Then you guys are willing to mess it because they're big hanging over, to take the money off East Chancy wastewater treatment plant, put it down here. And also off the western industrial site and put it for the Pine Swamp to get that project done, because that is a large project and one that needs to be done, so. Yeah, and she's appreciative of it, uh, in her boat, slither heads against the tables, just trying to get, get it off the ground and get it going and under progress, so. Um.
We're going to have one, but just, you had a second, I was in front of the show up. Did you give that second? He didn't say about, he just saw the movement. Okay.
So the projects have been, my, uh, everything's underway, going good. Today is the, the inspection center and the sheriff's office, uh, down there, safety complex is looking good, putting stuff on, uh, got wind of Z and all that good stuff, or so whether it's going to happen just a little bit, but they're in a good place where they could work all winter in there. And if you've been up to the right work, power, the final, final things there, they just finished that some paper. So it does, it looks good, I think the department has got cameras up and everything, um, got quite a few cameras around the county. And so we're out of that. Yeah, they still have a lot of work to do there, but, uh, you know, we have a, kind of FEMA project up there to redo the basketball court, you know, jingles and redo the walking trails and stuff that got damaged, the peanuts, trees that was down on, you know. So we've talked about, it's around the, close to two hundred thousand. It's in the portal to be, be approved. Um, so everything's moving along, far as the projects here, sometimes it's hard. FEMA projects, we are seeing some money start to come in, that's been a big topic here in western North Carolina, the whole, especially here in our office. Uh, we're not seeing big chunks come through, everything's left a little bit in the portal, we've got about forty four projects in, um, from the berm at King River, King River Park, the campground, uh, to redoing some stuff up at the landfill that got damaged as far as trees down and maybe some washout. We've turned off it again, while it would be a queue, our, our engineers have been up there trying to get all the damages that we can and, uh, so it don't hit our budget later. So, uh, really into the pushing the bridge, trying to get our debris money back, because let's face it, that's the biggest chunks. Um, so hopefully we'll see some of that shake loose, I'm real appreciative that Ted Bud's office, I think that shit down. I know Congressman Taylor's office has been trying to help us, take down some, uh, money out of the, the federal administration, so we're hoping. Our everywhere's our federal shakeout. Anyway, I know, we'll just say. But, uh, right now we're seeing the small stuff, it used to be big stuff to us when we'd have two or three hundred thousand dollars, that was kind of pretty big stuff, but now we just don't fix stuff on your way. So there, we'll, we'll still push toward that, still working with our FEMA reps or state reps and trying to get it, get it going, so. Um, everything else is, seems to be running pretty good, weather depending, a lot of this, it's only weather on the wheels. I think it should be done pretty quickly though, in Charlie Brown Road, so, those two projects will be. Um, let's see here, brackets, everything, and talking about progress and money and all that all day long, pretty much. It's stories of, of FEMA project. And we are starting to see some numbers come through off, uh, the park. And we're looking, you know, what come through there, engineers, that's when the first round three was around ten million dollars. The berm is a vision of three point five, so, um, still looking at mitigation on that part, um, that'll be hopefully rounded up here, this water. Uh, this is favorite part, um, and then of course the campground, the whole underballack, so. Um, we should, on the mitigation side, we should be telling something pretty soon, uh, before Thanksgiving, so you're pretty quick, so. Uh, everything's coming back good, here's your report, stuff on that. And we'll get up with some, ladies and stuff. We'll go over there, so just same thing on that, hopefully, uh, maybe fifty minutes, but maybe we can add in.
Do they have numbers on white?
Um, I've never heard of the fucking white, like, from the pump frame, a lot of stuff that was twisted, it's hard to get back in there too without clearing up a lot of ground, so.
A lot of that is not taken.
Chris is going to do it on. Yeah, I reckon, Philip, do you know that answer, if all of the sand blew out from the campground up there, or you, you know, thirty days, it had to roll the process?
And we've got thirty days left before that expires, or we'll get the haul of that. Because they were.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I did, I would, Chris, Chris, uh, go back to get her and not a very good job there, so. We had, I would have had, uh, FEMA does the fact of that, through the debris program. The ELO operation. It had to get out of there, so, um, it was relatively, it'd be a very bothering. Anyway, I'll stop there, let's see if I have any questions on the particular thing. Otherwise, I will, I think we have Blue Ridge Rising here. Friend with Phillips would like to tend to speak to you, we didn't get on the agenda, but I thought I'd ask. I'm just want the, she spoke to us last month, I felt a comment, and we, uh, wanted to ask her to tend to speak.
Yeah, we may have this already. Or if you want me to just, I'm a little bit generated, can I put for you, what would y'all like? Okay, well, um, again, friend Philip's with Blue Ridge Rising, and that's an arm of the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. The first page here kind of talks about the Parkway Initiative, um, things they want to do. And one of the big pieces is to bring, sort them off the Parkway into our gateway. Every county in North Carolina and Virginia that touches the Parkway, they're trying to, you know, build awareness, bring people off, you know, storms and restaurants. Okay, um, we're, we're asking all counties that touch the Parkway to, um, adopt this resolution, I'm giving you a draft of it here. And the first three points are basically just generalities about the Blue Ridge Parkway. The next two points focus on Parkway Foundation and the Blue Ridge Rising Plan that you have, uh, here in front of you, kind of a short list.
I'm trying to sound.
Okay. Um, well, again, let's see, I'm now doing three, the fourth and the fifth where all the resolutions are just basically talking about the Parkway Foundation and, and the local reserve and Blue Ridge Rising Plan. And they did start the Blue Ridge Rising Plan before company, Hurricane Helene, but have certainly had to adjust a little bit due to all the damage to the Parkway company. So there, then you see on down there, the item about top of the story, Helene causing catastrophic damage, um, and repairs are critical. And the collaboration of the local, federal government is critical and is responsible. And they're asking, you know, that we all come together, every county in Virginia, North Carolina that touches the Parkway, to just back the Blue Ridge Rising Plan. Uh, again, we are going to ask you for money, and to just get a wonderful grant from ARC. I think I missed this sheet I gave you, it talks about, um, I want to say it's five point three. On the backside, you'll kind of see the three-year budget for funding sources. And, um, from ARC as well as other numerous entities. And so, again, they're just asking for every county to agree to this, to adopt this resolutions and support the Blue Ridge Rising project. Um, and then on the back of that sheet, or you may have a second sheet, um, the items one through four, funding for repairs, they just kind of lay out their plan on the back of the resolution, that draft resolution. Y'all have that second part? Okay. Um, implement, implementation of the Blue Ridge Rising Strategic Plan and collaboration and support and coordination creation. And again, here as a result of the Blue Ridge Rising Strategic Plan, they ask someone from each county that touches the Parkway to volunteer as a Blue Ridge Rising ambassador, so I am your Yancy County, County Ambassador. Um, we are, currently, we have every county in North Carolina that has adopted this resolution, so Yancy is our last one we're waiting for. And, um, I want to say the majority of the Virginia municipalities and, I don't know, do they call counties in Virginia? Okay, yeah, okay, Commonwealth, thank you, have, have also adopted this resolution. So again, we ask as just a way of showing partnership, um, and support for the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation and. But I'll stop talking, y'all have question?
One, is this?
Well, we, yes, where are you, are you on this page? Okay. Yes. And so, yes, I think they, you know, already gone to the table about this. This is not, this is a little bit dated, what I'm, what I'm handed to, yes.
I've been, I've had some meetings, I had one up here on top, uh, before this was, and, uh, Heather and myself, Lynn, and I had a, a group there. Talked about, you know, what's the Parkway, how we could help, what was there, how they could help Yancy County, so. They did reach out and have some meetings there in the beginning, and then of course, what happened. Um, but the Parkway is very vulnerable.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not going to, this, this question is, and this is federal, is it? The land is a public parkway?
Yes, it's a, it is a park, it's the biggest.
I, I just. Kind of understand. I mean, about both these organizations, set about against it. The reason behind Blue Ridge Rising and the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, that it can be a federal park, federal hub. Um, is that, that typical, let's say, uh, you know, I mean, is it typical to have these kind of organizations for these parks?
I think, and I, I, I don't know for sure, but, no, fun, and I still. No, I, I appreciate the question. I think the, I know for the Blue Ridge Parkway, federal funding runs short. So, uh, a recent case in point, our mental jail museum, um, with, with the federal government closure, there was nobody to run that, so the foundation paid forward, the Parkway Foundation paid forward, we will pay.
So what was the example?
It is.
That, that the parents can't afford.
Yes, and a lot of deferred maintenance, pre-hurricane, that I'm sure y'all were, you know, aware of, but, but again, need to, the gap filled where, where Obama can't, isn't good covered.
Yeah, one of my, I were just saying, hey, why does Yancy County seem wrong, and what's on your side that you guys need help with, acting women? That make it better, where's the, that, all, finding? It was kind of that.
That's where we got.
Yes.
That helps with entrance, exit, whatever.
Yeah, and one of the recent. Yes, and one of the recent things happening right now with, with the Blue Ridge Rising Initiative, is they are working on signage on the Parkway similar to our highways, you know, that say, exit here for permanent, watch and yeah, kind of things, they're also working to get wifi up there. So when our tourists are wondering, you know, where can I go for my lunch, looking up on, on their phone, those, those kind of things. How to get to anything, when, now we're in, yes, when our, our access and what's. I have none, but maybe.
All right, any questions?
Thank you, and I have one last plug, uh, where in my mail of community college, Dr. Boyd asked me to remind you all, you're all invited in his dinner Tuesday, November eighteenth, at the Blue Ridge Boutique Hotel, he's in Brisket, I'm perfect, so please come five thirty. Thank you.
All right.
One more thing, and then we're finished up on my side. And my best friend wanted to remind me, the town square, she's one of, uh, she's updated on on the marker later.
So the town has just approached us to permission from you all to place a marker on the south side entrance of Town Square. And this is just to honor John Yeljaki by the length of the remaining land back in eighteen thirty-four. This is for a grant, thanks for permission and layer to go. Make a small flag, all for the grant. That's just for approval from you all.
All right, everybody. The motions are here, so. Say, although you could say ah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And by Town Square, I would ask you to spend away. Their star foot. Free training. Free that Town Square, long time, even special arbiters. Their assistance and what, how much the pet have taken out. We have schedule on the town, what that community, X, Y's. Town Square. To the management.
I don't have that from me. You, we need to discuss that.
Yeah.
Fully what for them. So we.
We definitely have to discuss. Yeah.
So that's, that's all I have.
Any questions from this one? All right. County Commission Report. Anybody got anything to report or talk about? Got a couple things. Um, everybody on. Um, tomorrow is Christmas Day. So if you know of it or see of it, thank of it. Um, we have pregnant women that we have for the cause of that reason. Willing to serve and to give, and we get to remember that. So just remember. And although Christmas break, it's, I know it's coming up before our next meeting, correct? So what's that?
That'll be the first Saturday, fourth and. The sixth.
Sixth.
You guys are signed up. Signed up. Uh, Angie signed up back in sixteen.
Did you own it ready? Hopefully we can. So everybody remember that. Tell everybody about the Christmas break on the sixth. And then our, our Christmas stand.
Christmas center, I believe, is the, the fifth or twenty-third. Be at the Town Center. Uh, twenty-third. Twenty-third, then Town Center. And then don't forget too, I'll put it out someday, uh, at the hill, we guys may have. There are some, uh, things that, uh, Grant Fields and the five, uh, commissioners do. As I find out, uh, something, this Kevin Wade lady. Uh, just check your email, it's basically sent it out, um, from Adrian Hill. Uh, there's three or three of them in the month. Personally saying so.
And it does with Blackland. I had a meeting with him. Does with Blackland, they're doing pretty good. About to do hospital over in Louisville. And excited about that. Like anybody else, I'm excited about that. It starts immediately after. Plus, uh, they're looking to, to bring some stuff. I can't say a lot, but we don't know a lot. They don't need it right at this moment, but looking for some of the stuff in the county, county health wise. Uh, and facility wise. So I think that will be win, win, win. Looking forward.
So I have one of that in three weeks. Kind of like an old player, uh, but. Dear father, this is for, um, the father I give for, uh, to take my mom. And that is actually the own side. Uh, that's what I think. Um, but that is actually. Feel. And that's one of them. Not a reason that, that's one of them. But I want everybody to see the side, uh, that it's quite effective for things about the town. Uh, hold on, you know, it's a step now. And I'll tell you. In November, I want to say the twenty-first.
Yes. It, there might, it's gonna be a pretty big deal. It's gonna be a big time. Both of the plans and both of the ways.
Don't get that feeling, but it's, it's sometimes.
Four months. Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is our county attorney's report. Come along. Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sam, you're gonna go out. Last, uh, well, not the last, but next to the last thing on our agendas, our public comments. We do have one speaker, Mr. Danny McIntosh. So you have four of my friends. Thank you for coming. We hope to be able to.
Big breed.
Thank you.
Uh, now, you start talking about three and three, I think a lot going on in the, that was not the kind of thing that I would give. The, uh, Marine Corps League Spence, I think today is the two hundred and fiftieth. It is a United States Marine Corps, a heavy weapon. And Jeff, thank you for your service in case I don't see you. But, uh, there's actually a note that I whipped him into the night and that is Betty. And we got a road whiskey. And Earl was long time, same life and, uh, they raised two, five buildings. Late in California, the Sanmu. And they were thoughtful about these, these projects, these projects, these projects. The project, anybody. And some very farming, road construction. If the young, young, McQueen and Matt Nardelle and Matt and I got a quarter century plus, which is meant why, why, uh, you, why not say that? So she started to read me. Yes, she was one of those people who was playing every time she saw the truth. She always had a smile. But I think she was always thinking. I don't think her mind was out. But on a personal note. Before. And before, of course. Before our general and before law. And before Stanton took, before the Ash Bully. There was Ben and Betty's Economy Center. At the intersection of kind of the US, they made a west path. It was a clothing store, it was a hardware store, it was a farm store, it was a hones. And a meat processing facility with, with, I was flopping. I said, that. But as an eight-year-old growing up on high farm. Betty Ann will always be me twenty-five years old and running the store with you. Five, six candy bar. Ten cent passes. Fifteen cent Vienna sausage. And twenty cent passes paper. They're kind of how we. I ain't old that old to remember that. Uh, but it's quite a good people. That, that's, uh, that's being quite, quite a great family, got great people to be here next. Thank y'all. Thank you for wanting to be with me.
I really.
Okay, this. This is, this is for the. This is on side.
New hospital, fifty-four only, I'm telling you. Eleven thirty to one. Said you can park it at one point back of the street.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, eleven thirty to one.
All right, last up.
Come on, man.
Vote for Matt second. Now you have the second. You made the vote. And all of the people say ah. Thank you, folks. The government, we appreciate.